Good evening and welcome to this neighborhood meeting with Senator Paul Wellstone. The meeting tonight is sponsored by Senator Wellstone and the Community and Resources Exchange Program, which is better known to some of you as CARE. CARE is a partnership between Minneapolis neighborhoods, Hennepin County, the city of Minneapolis, and Minneapolis Public Schools. Residents of CARE Neighborhoods select priority problems -- can you hear me now? I'm not used to this. Select priority problems which will then be creatively solved with bureaucrats. My name is Gaynel Shandle and I'm the Intervention Coordinator in the CARE Neighborhood. There are two reasons for our meeting tonight. The first reason is that you will have an opportunity to hear Senator Wellstone's thoughts about key issues for the upcoming congressional session. And second, you will have a chance to tell Senator Wellstone the kinds of issues that you think the Congress should tackle. I'm sure residents of the Jordan Neighborhood will be happy to hear this because there were several times in our CARE meetings where I passed the buck on to the federal government. So tonight the buck is going to stop here with Senator Wellstone. Paul Wellstone was elected to the Senate from the state of Minnesota in 1990. He has lived in Minnesota since 1969 when he and his wife Sheila and their children moved to Northfield where he assumed a job at Carlton College. And it's now my pleasure and an honor to introduce Senator Paul Wellstone.
Thank you, Gaynel. Let me, first of all, thank CARE and also the school here for letting us have this meeting. And let me just say to people in the Jordan community in the North Side that I view this gathering tonight as a give and take session. It's not going to be a speech. I'm much more interested in listening to what you have to say. And I'll just set the context this way. I think that the election this past November was about change. I think that people in Minnesota and people around the country have made it pretty clear to those of us in office, whether we're Democrats or Republicans, that people want to see some significant change take place. I've had a lot of town meetings around the state of Minnesota and I wanted to make sure that we had one on the North Side. And I've listened carefully to what people have to say. And I really do think that the expectations are up and that people believe that now's the time to get moving. And what I want to find out about from you all tonight is simply this: I'd be interested in what problems you think we ought to tackle. I'd be interested in what issues you think are most important to the community. I'd be interested in any direction that you can give me. I'd be interested in any constructive criticism that you want to make. I'd be interested in any just questions that you want to raise. So this, I think, will be a participatory meeting. We're not large, large in number. We can have lots of discussion. And I think I can go away learning a fair amount from you all. And my purpose is to act on this. It's not one of those meetings where it's hello, goodbye, never see you again. I care about issues. I care about politics. And I certainly care about being a senator from Minnesota that is responsive to community people. So with that, why don't we open it up for discussion? And let me again be real clear: first 100 days and beyond, what are the issues that you want to see addressed?
I am really happy that the Clinton administration has gotten elected and that we are out of the Republican years where all of the social programs got cut. But I do have a concern that we don't try to make up for all that we've lost by spending money. So the big issue for me is the deficit. And I want to pass on a message that was subtle so that it gets said. A friend of mine, when she saw that Bill Clinton was going to win, voted for Perot so that the message would get passed on that she's concerned about the deficit and that people want that to be kept in perspective with everything else. And so I'm passing that on to you. And so I'm hoping we can find a balance between having the safety net that we need and having the programs we need to move the country forward without and still handle the deficit.
How many of you would list deficit reduction as among your top three concerns?
Top three.
Top three. And how many of you would not list deficit reduction? Let me just, let me just simply ask, among those of you that said yes, why do you list deficit? I'll start out with Paul.
I think it's important because just like me, when I run up my credit card, that's $20 or $50 a month that is just disappearing. And so we're spending money on all this stuff when it could be going on programs. And so like we as individuals need pain control, so does the government.
Some of you who raised your hand and said, "Yeah, Paul, I want you to understand that deficit reduction should be at the top." Did I get a few comments from you about that just for a moment? And also, if some of you don't, please.
I remember when we went into Desert Storm and we went with our hand out begging like a poor man because we didn't have the dollars and cents to do Desert Storm by ourselves. And that, to me, indicates that we need deficit reduction. We need to be financially solvent as a country in order to do some of the things we should be doing and some of the things that we really want to do. And that's my concern about deficit reduction. If it's holding us back, it's going to make us go really up as a country.
Okay.
And there's something else I'd like to mention if I may.
On deficit reduction?
No.
Go ahead, you have the floor.
I've heard on news that President, excuse me, President elect Clinton has said that if a bill reaches his test putting an end to right-wing legislation, that he would sign it. And I thought, is there a reasonable chance that such a bill would pass for those?
It would be heavily filibustered probably in the Senate. I'll support it. I did not realize, I know that President elect Clinton did say that he was in favor of S-55, which would ban foreign replacement, people out on strike. I didn't realize that he said he wanted to pass with support of national law, any right to work, state laws. Is that what you're saying?
That's my impression. And deficits are too important, but the economy, which is the whole country's drug situation, right now on this North Side, you are in a drug-infested area. There is death almost every single one, any one or more.
When Larry stands up and says to me, "I want you to know that," this is what he's saying, and I'm not saying you're wrong at all, "I want you to know that deficit reduction is an important goal, but I want you to know, Senator Wellstone, that you're in a neighborhood tonight where we have a huge problem with drugs. That's our number one problem." What is it that you think, as a United States Senator representing you, I should be doing about this?
Number one, I'd like to see the United States be a world leader in education, but population control, everything else on the peripheral. Our deficit will fix itself if we address the population. If we address energy, change to alternative, low-tech, power-to-the-people type energy. And I really, really, truly hope that you take on the powers that be: the petrochemical industry. And the third thing is the war on drugs. You opened up an interesting area that I think we're going to have to face real soon in the next couple of months, if not years. And the war on drugs right now is the most laborable thing that's particularly hard to handle.
Let me throw over this question to you all here in the community and challenge you to think more on this because I came here to get some direction. I have never met anybody who is satisfied about drugs in the community and what it does to people in communities. But what I'm still interested in is what is it, and I haven't heard too many people say that they think the war on drugs has been successful. But what I'm interested in hearing from you all about is what is it that you think, as a United States Senator, I should be doing that would be helpful to the community? I mean, what would you suggest in specific? Yeah, whoever's.
Legalism.
Okay, let me just hear your proposals.
You know, when you talk about crack, and you're right, I have two crack houses across the street from me and one right next door, so I see this on a daily basis. But I want to tell you something. It reminds me of a scene out of one of my favorite movies, Walt Disney's Fantasia, where a character named the mouse, the source's apprentice, he put the eggs to the ground and what happened? It's the same thing.
I've heard a lot of rhetoric about a war on drugs and higher failure. I think the number one problem is that jobs, jobs are our number one problem. Thank you. We have jobs in the community, and we have jobs for not only adults but for kids in some kind of program that kids can relate to. The kids can relate to jobs if their parents don't have jobs. And that has been the, if you don't have a job, you have to do something else. So what do you do? You sell drugs, you do all kinds of other things. Nobody's going to die of starvation because of a fire that they don't have a job. And I think it's time that our citizens and our representatives realize the fact that the most important thing in our community today is to get jobs into the community. We have a number of situations where we've had pockets of jobs coming into the community which never came. Construction, low rent, land buying from companies that move into the community and they would build their property, their concerns, and move out and bring in their people. And the people in the community does not get jobs for those particular situations. And it has been that way for 20 years. It hasn't just got that way in the last two years or five years. It's been that way for 20 years. Thank you.
How many of you all, so we have a little bit more discussion, I want to also, Dwayne, I don't know if you don't mind, I want to make it real clear that Dwayne Williams, who's sitting up front here, let me introduce Dwayne, does a lot of work with me and does a lot of work in this community. And any questions that you have for Dwayne, he'll take as well, okay? Just to make that clear. Let me ask about, a little more discussion about jobs, real quickly. How many of you all would say would agree that jobs ought to be listed number one? Let me, if that many people are saying that to me, can we have a little bit more discussion about why you say that, about what kind of jobs you think would be important? And again, what do you want me to do as a United States Senator? Not to sort of for you, but with you. Do you see my questions? Can we just talk a little more about that?
And I can tell you some of the problems that nonprofits develop that we run into in dealing with anything in the area of jobs. First of all is, there aren't hardly any monies available in the private sector for economic development. Anything we have to do, we have to do through city programs, which we pay more money. Second, what we're finding out with those programs is, nobody gives a riff about whether or not the retirements are affirmative action or women and minority on business enterprises being decided high are really in force. We get tons of paperwork from the federal government requiring us to verify data-based act certification as far as paying a prevailing wage that's used to scale the local economy. But nobody really does much in the way of monitoring as far as affirmative action. And there aren't any programs to help people develop meaningful programs to get minority of women participation in the construction act or in the hiring. Everybody requires to have programs, but nobody wants anything really more than a piece of paper to see if they're going to do it. And that really needs to change.
I don't think we need no more conceivables or things like that because we have enough addiction already here. I think we don't have enough things for the kids to do early. Too many kids playing basketball, football, always simple. We don't have enough training for nothing else. We all came up to be basketball players or football or baseball players. We need things for the kids to learn how to do stuff. And we go enable them to have jobs here and have them working on the jobs and get them back. And these houses here are all empty and we need healthcare for the people so that they can get older, they get to keep them and all that.
Last thing that Kent says, and we talked about a lot of problems over the years where nothing has much happened, right? I take it meant especially the federal government. Do you all have some hope that now with the change of administration, that we might begin to see more monies coming back down like wine for these kind of programs?
Yes. First of all, my first suggestion is why not get AIP dues that gets preference for people like federal states don't complain, much as veterans do? Because there are people who pretty much know where jobs can be notified earlier than they know in public openings. There may not be many jobs in the state, but in general, they pay well, they get good benefits, which is something that everyone at the FTC is concerned with. When I opened up the notary at the Career Education Action to single parents, I tried to sign up for the military and I was told to not take it because I was a single parent. And yet I do have options if I were to be deployed somewhere overseas. My daughter could go stay with my parents. And you know, there are lots of options that the military can seem to, you know, believe are there. Second point, our third, why not completely redesign the welfare system specifically and listing it through aid of its recipients? That would give some of our jobs there. Throwing more money at programs that are severely flawed doesn't fix the problem, it just gives them more money to play with. Would it be possible, why not give educational options for any of the recipients? I've been encouraged because I consider the hypothetical person to seek a job just because of that reason, because I'm the whole state, the state's work ethic considers me employable. Well, it's very nice, but employers don't consider me employable. That's the important thing, realistically. And a job that I might find right now with my current level of education and experience might be a ghost, but it would leave me at ten options in the future for my education and it would have really little or no opportunity for advancement. I don't think in the long term that it would support me. It might keep me going for another five, 10 years. But you know, we all know that the pay rates are just not keeping up with cost of living and stuff, and that those are some of my concerns.
Bottom line of what you said is that welfare reform is important if what it needs is really jobs that you can support yourself on with health care benefits, childcare and all the rest. But you can't be just training or education for jobs that don't exist or jobs that pay such a low wage that should be worse off.
Yeah.
One of the problems that we are dealing with seem to be because something went wrong in the early stages. We have a drug problem because there's a loss of hope, we have a loss of hope because there's a loss, there's no jobs. We have no jobs because there's no education. I think there needs to be a real commitment to families. I think one of the big problems in this country is the family's quality apart. We don't have solid families, we don't have good education. We need to zap every single inch of every dollar out so that we can educate our kids because we're turning out drooling after drooling of students every year who barely have a really good education. They can't get a good job because they don't have a good education. I think that's high priority. I think there needs to be a portable housing. We have absentee landlords that come into areas that have houses, they don't know who they rented to, and they leave it, they don't maintain their homes, they don't take care of it, they don't rent it. And then they leave problems in the cities, in the communities like this, and we have to deal with it. There needs to be a portable housing for low-income children, there needs to be welfare reform. I don't want nothing that's not for the life, because there's a lot of talks that need to be addressed.
Oh, excuse me. Why are you calling? Who are they blaming?
But I guess my part, I think there needs to be an education for the kids. And it's got to start from zero because if you lose them there, that's why we have a drug problem, that's why we have unemployment, that's why we have a lot of these other problems. There's something happening in the state exam. We have to have portable housing, we have to have a commitment to really, what's wrong, maybe this is thinking utopianism, but what's wrong with maybe having companies that are in a specific area, what's wrong with them maybe donating or having, for them doing business in your community, allocating a certain amount of funds to take care of the community? We need to begin to be our brothers' keeper. There's too many companies looking after their own best interest and not the interest of the community that they serve. You know, things like that.
Locally, one of the things that we have to take, homeowners have to take here is like increasing property taxes in order to pay for local schools. And I want to support local schools, but say recently my example, I've had a 23 and a half percent increase in my portion of my taxes I go to schools. It just seems to be too much. And I was wondering what the federal government can do about that to sort of even out. I know that this is not just a problem here in Minneapolis, it's all over, that particularly in our city schools, you need money to support all the different programs that they have. But it seems really unfair, particularly, I mean, my home's value is $4,000. You know, I'm not a well-off person. And to have that constant increases and who knows what it's going to be after that. So what can the federal government do about that? And I want to say something about jobs.
I think that, I think that this whole issue of the disparity of per pupil expenditures for community, community based upon poverty tax wealth is really one of the great outrails of the country. Working on a bill, I'm excited about it, working with Jonathan Kholz of a book called Savage Equality: Public Education in America. What we're going to try to do is we're going to have a whole set of federal incentives to state governments, and we're going to say those state governments which move toward equalizing per pupil expenditure within their school districts around the state, will get a whole set of federal benefits. In other words, we're going to leverage a whole package of benefits to those states that move toward some equalization of per pupil expenditure.
What's an equalization mean?
Well, to get away from this, it needs trying to spend on this, we can send amount of money per pupil taken into allowance, a variety of different factors, as opposed to the tremendous disparity that exists right now. The federal government itself, I mean, it's mainly a bit of state responsibility, state and local responsibility. I think there should be a shift in the federal role. And I think at the minimum, the federal government can leverage a whole set of monies and programs and benefits to those states who are willing to take the steps to try and equalize per pupil expenditure for close to that. That's probably the best way that we're going to be able to get at it.
The other question I have about jobs is that President Bush recently just initialed the North American Free Trade Agreement, which basically sets into motion that we will have to be competing.
Can you hear?
That we all have to be competing with the unjust wages of the Mexican workers that pay $1 an hour. And we're supposed to compete with that. I think jobs are very, very crucial in this neighborhood, extremely crucial. But I also feel that with this North American Free Trade Agreement as it stands, that there's no chance for jobs, you know, that it's a very hopeless situation.
Let me ask you a question. Sorry.
Well, I guess I feel that most people's wages will be eroded by that trade agreement. Also, I feel a lot of our jobs will be gone. One person was talking about for the past 20 years that we've been losing jobs. We've been losing our manufacturing base in this whole country and it's falling to the low-wage countries.
How many of you all are part of the North American Free Trade Agreement? And how many of you, on the basis of what you think you know about that agreement, which will be probably initial December 17th or thereabouts by the President, how many of you think that you would be in favor of that agreement? And how many of you think you're opposed to that agreement? Okay, well, just to give quick answers because people are in my, that agreement will be initial by President Bush sometime around December 17th. Then it will go into an implementation, there'll be implementation language that we'll be working on in the Senate and the House, which will go on for some time. Ultimately, it will be on fast track. And it will have to be ultimately an agreement that we sign or don't sign within a year. I think that what's going to happen is, given the position of President-elect Clinton, is that the position that people like myself should take is not that we want to see the whole agreement ended because President-elect Clinton isn't going to do that, but rather we would be in favor of it if Mexico's required to adhere to their labor standards, if they're required to adhere to environmental, same environmental standards, and if they're required to adhere to the same health and safety standards. So I cannot give you, I cannot give you a prediction on the outcome. I can tell you that my position has been, I am opposed to the agreement as it's now constituted. I would only be in favor of the agreement if these conditions are met. I think the best hope we have is to try and work on those agreements. Bill Clinton himself has said that he might try and work on some bilateral agreements with Mexico to fix these problems. Let me just take other people.
But can I just ask one? I heard that because it's initialed and because it's on this fast track thing, it can only be voted up or down.
That's right.
But it can't be renegotiated.
That's right. Well, the agreement can be voted only up or down, but President Clinton can negotiate bilateral agreements to Mexico to fix a variety of different problems. And we can insist, many people can insist, their upper tally vote will be dependent upon these conditions being met. You raised a very important question. I just am very surprised that people are so aware of this. I'm glad you are because I think it's a trade agreement that's going to have tremendous implications and not so good a problem, I would think, yes. By the way, it's not as if the people in Mexico are necessarily going to benefit. I'm going to go sometime in February to the Miquiladora area on the border just to look at the conditions there, US companies going over and what the wage conditions are and what the environmental conditions are. I have seen pictures and they're pretty poor.
I work for the Wilder Foundation, have been involved on the North Side with a group of community citizens. I'm speaking to you because I'm really concerned about the way we're even framing the issues. I think the gentleman alluded to the fact that we're talking about things as if they're distinct and separate and can be solved singly. And what I've seen in my work here on the North Side with really committed community people is that you can't separate out the issues of education, of jobs, of family needs, of healthcare, of improvement of the community image, of crime, you know, reducing the crime and violence in the area. All these things are interconnected. And I think we really have to look at federal, state, and local funding that has splintered us, that has driven us apart, that has put us in competition for dollars. And requirement, any new funding and any new program should be a demonstration at the local level that the community is involved, that key people are there, are treated to the process, and that those people who show the hope and the commitment and empowerment and change at the local level are given the dollars to show that the change can happen. And what I would say you can do is start seeding money in like, business has R and D. They do things in pilots. The North Side of Minneapolis would be one of the best places in the country to seed money to show how communities can work together and how things can change when you collaborate and eliminate these artificial barriers. The people are here, they're smart, they know what they want, they know how to work together, and they're not yet without hope. They're desperate, but they're not yet without hope. This is not alone. You've got people here who are really committed and really willing to put in volunteer time to solve tough community issues. What they need is a layup. And I don't care if it's a city or the county or the state or the federal government, somebody has got to start paying attention. The community is where it is whole and there's some value already. And we can do something tremendous, the schools on the North Side. We could do things to combine people and access resources, to put job programs in schools. The buildings are here. Business, actually, if you knock on your door, is really interested. Foundations are really interested. And I'm really tired of being asked to choose between the deficit and job programs and education because for me, it's all interrelated and we're not going to solve one of those problems until we start looking at them all and empowering the people right here in this room to grow the persuasives and get the job done.
Senator, what I would like to add to you, why do you have to pay these prisoners all the rest of their lives when they come out of office? I'm going to talk about something that I don't ever care and everything else before. You don't ever say anything about that.
What? I'm saying that I'm going to push it for cut.
No, 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 dear, no. I'm working for you, I'm working hard for you. Have you come and see what you look like? I work so hard for you. I can see their point of it is, how come they, I can see them maybe after they're out of office, maybe a year or two years, but why is the rest of their life, we've got to follow them all over and take a sun bath every time they take one?
I think I get what you're saying. I think I get what you're saying. Thank you. Maybe some misplaced priorities in terms of how we spend the money. Maybe some misplaced priorities in terms of how we spend the money, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. There's a friend of mine that jumped, her jacket was stolen, and all her money, and after the cops took down evidence and stuff like that, they went out to eat, they went blow it up, they didn't even call it in. And then I've seen some other cops take down some other people from about fees and stuff like that, and they call it a little bit, and I don't know why they don't take kids as serious as some of them.
Do you all, do you think that from your own experience in the community, that what Amanda said rings true, that when the kids are not taken as seriously as they should be by police, do you think that's true from your own experience? How many of the showtimes can say yes, and how many would say no? I think that part of the problem is when kids are younger, they don't vote, they're not really viewed as people that, maybe people in office or people in public service listen to as much, or you don't have a whole lot to say, I would think is one of the big problems. I mean, what you say to me, I take the face value, I don't know, but it just seems to me that that's probably one of the things that happens, you know, we tend to say it's kids, and we don't take it as seriously, we should. Why don't you, what do you think would happen if kids your age, you were in junior high school?
Yeah.
Junior high school. What would happen if the kids, you and some other kids from the junior high school, said that you wanted to meet with the police to talk about this, and you wanted to know whether or not they would take your concerns more seriously, do you think they'd come?
I'm not sure, but we went over, a bunch of us got really tired of it at one point, and we went over to a police station in St. Paul, and they gave us some answers and they were serious about it. And then we went to one over north, and it wasn't in this area, but they kind of ruled it okay.
Well, my suggestion to you, Amanda, is why don't you talk to some of the other students, and if other kids feel the same way, why don't you all yourselves organize meetings, say, "We want you to come and meet with us, police." I doubt seriously they'll turn you down. And then you just directly say to them what it is that's on their mind, okay?
And another part of the problem is, I'm sick and tired of white kids walking on one side of the block, black kids walking on the other side of the block, or at school, whites are on one side, blacks are on the other. I'm tired of it. But are you joining kids or how?
Am I? What do you think I should be doing?
Well, it's, like, I met with the mayor, and he told me some stuff, what, some special programs to do, are you doing that, any special programs yourself?
The federal government where I work has a long ways to go toward beginning to get serious about cities again. And I think when we start to ask for support for education, in some ways, as has been said by some of you all, it's very interrelated, and don't people have hope, and their jobs can be educated for, and people can think about their community, and you don't have people of, people of color and whites competing for a few scarce jobs, I think they need to get to see things get better.
Yeah, and our teachers are teaching us, not to resist about getting older.
Good.
When the teachers are being resistant about their... They receive an extra.
Okay. All right, thanks, Amanda.
I see too many people moving out of the community, houses are on for sale, housing, you know, dropping, the city's starting to drop, and I think that we've got to keep the core city, by the way, because if everybody just runs away, the problem's gonna go with it. And so I appreciate you coming, I don't know what the answer's at, scares me.
How many of you believe that there should be deeper reductions in the Pentagon budget, some of that money to deficit some others? And how many of you disagree with that? Okay? And how many of you think, this is a maybe more difficult one, but let's just get beyond the rhetoric, how many of you believe that taxes will have to be raised, not for working low, moderate income, but for upper-middle income, upper-income people? In order to have money both for deficit reduction and investment? And how many of you disagree with that?
Maybe we need to raise the minimum wage, because there are a lot of people that need a minimum wage, and then they have to go pay their rent, and the rent is so high that that number doesn't go up like that. And these are the people that are not taking minimum wage, are doing a little better, you have to make a fight. Two years back, factory jobs were paying $10, $12 an hour, and now they're paying $7, $8 an hour, and yet the rent keeps going up and knocking up. What have you done about that? I don't know, what can you do about keeping your rent down?
The proposal is that we ought to at the federal level pass a federal minimum wage bill that gets far beyond $4.25 an hour, is that the proposal?
Yeah.
Well, what we can do is we can pass it, and it's probably gonna be on the agenda, and there'll be a lot of opposition to it. I would support raising the minimum wage, I think we should. I think you make a good replacement. I'll just express my own honestly opinion, which is I think there are two deficits, one's a budget deficit, the other's an investment deficit, and if we don't start investing our kids in education now, and we don't clean up the environment now, and we don't start investing, you know, whether it be investment tax credits, private centers, whether it be public infrastructure, if we don't invest in the economy now, I think decline is gonna be, get decline is gonna be, get decline. So we're gonna have to have the courage, if you will, to raise the necessary money to do, to begin to do the job. All of these problems that have been swept under the rug for so long, we're not gonna be resolved, though we're not, but we ought to start changing the direction. I think it's gonna require pretty significant cuts in Pentagon, I think it's gonna require, I've always said we should restore progressivity to the income tax code, I think people on the top shouldn't pay much higher than they're paying right now. And I think we're gonna have to dramatically change the way we finance public debt. But none of it believes, but all of it I look forward to being a part of, because I think we need to make these changes. Healthcare was mentioned, I think I know the answer to this, but would you all put this first 100 days and beyond, because a lot of people dissolve in 100 days, but for the 103rd Congress, this Congress is coming up, would you put national health insurance at the top, or a showman, sort of like central, central issue? And how many know?
You made a head of jobs?
No, I'm sorry, I think at the top among the top, two or three issues.
Yeah.
It doesn't seem to me that Clinton is really committed to the healthcare reform that I find out attractive. Do you think we can push it? What's kind of the politics? I think we're all here kind of agreed on what should be done.
Do you think in the next session, the first 100 days, do you think that healthcare, not first, but universal healthcare coverage ought to be one of the accomplishments of this administration as not first? I mean, you see that as central. And again, show accounts, anybody who does it? Okay, please. I'll tell you what I'd love to see, I'd love to see meetings like this all across the country over the next three or four months, where people in the House of Representatives, like Commissioner Hillary, or Councilwoman Cherry Holmes and others, they're here in the community, you know, or legislators, they're close to people. The Washington part is too distant, and I would like to see, Acorn, for those of you who are still here, this is right out of the community organizing, I'd like to see over the next three or four months accountability sessions, where people call all the representatives and senators back to their home states, because DC is an expensive airplane trip away, and essentially say, "These are the issues we care about, and we want you to get to work, and we want you to accomplish something, and we want you to come back and meet with us every two or three months." If we get the political struggle, if you will, back in the communities where we're supposed to go anyway, and not just in Washington, where there is that influence you have identified correctly so, I think we have a much better chance. Grassroots politics is where I'd put my hope.
As a retired teacher, I really appreciate your leadership in education issues, and I too like some of the things that Clinton talks about, because I think both he and his wife are very interested in kids. And I think it's shameful that this country spends such a small proportion of its resources on the schools, smaller than any other developed country that I can think of, and the priorities are really screwed up. And when they say things like, "Well, just throwing money at educational help," how do they know? We've never really tried that. As far as, also, I'd like to say I really commend freely that my healthcare, this is absolutely got to happen soon, because it's just, we're just getting deeper and deeper. On the deficit deduction, I would not like to see that being a number one priority, because I think people have interest problems, it's got to be one of the top priorities, because we're just getting in deeper and deeper. The issue about jobs, I'm old enough to remember when Frank and Roosevelt instituted, I don't know if he did it, but somebody did it, his administration, the WPA, which everybody laughed at at the time. However, people can ride over every city in this country and find libraries that were built in the 30s, other things that were built in the 30s. During that time, it gave people jobs, and they got paid, and then they had resources, and then things just kind of popped up. And now all that stuff is fine, but that was a long time ago, 60 years ago. And I think that all of those things, which could provide a lot of jobs, bridges, roads, buildings. As far as cuts, nobody's been talking about what to cut, we all just want more stuff. I have a couple of weird suggestions here. One is, I think you ought to take a good look at NASA, and some of their things, which are lovely and would be marvelous if we all were so very apt, but do we really need a space station? Do we really need all that SBI that underestimates, probably Pentagon thing? But there are a lot of things there that really need to be looked at. I would cut the National Security Council, all they do is cause trouble. I would cut the project ELS, which is a project of the Navy of the Plan A with timing, which I understand their electric bill alone is something like $3,000 a week, and their whole mission is to signal submarines when the nuclear war starts. Now, this is ridiculous. You know, I hope somebody is looking at these weird, esoteric things that we ought to cut off. And that competitive, whatever it was, counsel that Dan Quayle was in charge of, he's gonna do it. Just one other question, and that is in regard to Somalia.
Yeah.
The people in Somalia have been starving for years and years and years, and we didn't do anything. Do you think it's strange that every time they commit troops to something, it happens in December, the Congress has gone away, and so we never really discuss what we're doing? And is there a danger that we could end up having to stay there for a long, long time, because the minute we leave, everything will be...
Well, let me agree, because I want to get to everybody darkly on Somalia for a moment, I'll take, because I think the rest of the things you said were pretty straightforward. I don't really, personally, on this particular, I mean, I believed and was involved in a lot of phone calling, a lot of pushing for intervention about eight months ago. I mean, I don't know why it's taken so long, and I guess I don't, I'm gonna choose to believe that it wasn't done because we're not in session. I think it was done because, probably for a couple of different reasons, but at the very minimum, I think people in the country just saw the pictures, couldn't take it any longer. President Bush will have to speak for himself, I mean, but I think it's good that we're going in. As you know, I've been pretty public about it, I think it was a mistake to Congress not to approve it, I think we advocated some of our responsibility, I don't, I think we should have had a role in it, but I'm very supportive of it. But the people that know Somalia, say, "Me," I mean, you know, Wayne and I have been talking about it, I mean, this is part of Wayne's area, their own study, is that I don't think it's, the issue of getting food to people may be, may be an issue that we can deal with, but the bigger issue is whether we're gonna get the guns, take the guns away. I mean, that's what people in Somalia want, you know? I mean, we had a lot to do with getting the guns in the first place. And that's not gonna be such an easy task. And I think those are the kinds of policy objectives that haven't been sorted out yet by anybody. But I'm quite frankly, glad I'm there. I'd like to see it be as international as possible, but I think it's, I think it's the right thing to do.
What about the social security? Don't you think we should stop taking into that, people off the welfare, make sure that they get their social security, that people don't want to work, have something, you know, work for, so they stay in their retirement, get their social security in there?
Other than that, there is enough funding for social security for people who retire, okay? And right now for Medicare, although I hope that'll change to Medicare, because I hope that'll become part of universal healthcare coverage, is based upon the number, it goes back, didn't somebody say it earlier, jobs, jobs, jobs? It has to do with the number of people who are working at what wage levels. I mean, what social security is, is a transfer of resources from people who are working and pay in for people who are no longer working, who are older Americans, which is a contract that we have in our country, which is fine. The point is that when we're 65 years of age now, but what we receive by way of benefits is gonna be dependent upon what kind of, what percentage of actually them can go into that, and that in turn depends upon whether or not we have higher or low levels of employment. It also depends upon, not just more jobs, but what kind of jobs.
For our agents, for our social security, I don't think we need to be encouraged.
I think social security is a universal program, I think it's one of the best things we did, I think it's been successful, we no longer have huge numbers of poor people among older people, I agree with you. I'm just saying that in the future, on present course, I think we would be in real trouble with those of us who are baby boomers later on, but I don't view the present course as the future course, I think what we're talking about is changing that course. We don't have an economic act together, we have not been investing in our own economy, it's been paper entrepreneurship, it has been leveraged buyouts, it's been merger mania, and it's been a lot of debt, and not a lot of debt based upon any good investment, and we better get back to it. My feeling is people are not expecting merit, they just want to see a beginning of some change. Nobody, and we've gotta do that.
I'm just kind of concerned about getting money into the neighborhood organizations, the ones that work with the community, that is the community that know what we need, and I'm on board, and we're looking at large deficit for the year, we need money to help the neighborhoods, we know what we need, and we need more of that.
I think my job, I heard what a couple of people said earlier, I feel like my job is to fight for the resources for communities. I think the programs get developed, the action, the implementation, the community neighbor, that's what I want. So what I want to try and do is fight to get more resources for our cities, or maybe in the back, or rural areas. But I love, those of you knowing, and a number of people have been friends for years, I really believe in this notion of community-based economic development, and I think the role of neighborhood organizations is critical.
Good evening, Senator Wilson. My question is this, for this next term that's coming up, you're giving 10 priorities, you can only do three, three that's going to make the state of Minnesota happy, which three are you going to choose? Could you choose, if you had to choose, to do over this term that you realistically could do? What three priorities would you encourage?
I could get to three, but it's fair enough.
I mean, you can't do all 10 of our priorities.
I'll do three, and then I'll tell you two more, and I've got five, but it's sort of my card.
Do you know what you could accomplish during this meeting?
Get to work on it, hope to get some work done, do that, nothing, the law will change overnight. Economy, jobs, number one, okay? People said jobs, challenge, jobs, we get no disagreement with me on that. Two, healthcare, universal healthcare coverage. The debate will be what kind? Out. Three, education, kids.
So those are the three priorities?
Those are my three main areas. Those are the three areas?
Chase is what we want.
You better believe it, you better believe it, those are the three areas. I'm gonna just add one other that I think would be, fits in here to the question that was raised by earlier, and that is, I'd love to see a major campaign before, I'd like to see the way dramatic change in how we finance these campaigns. You know, I was a gadlerader for Sandberg when it was at the very age of the campaign, and I saw all these people, it was over at Cherry Holmes Home, and it was all labor-intensive, people were gonna go out door knocking, and it could be done that way. And in a lot of ways, I think the Senate race in Minnesota was that way around the state, but the fact of the matter is, these Senate races, people are raising $8, $10, $12, $13 million, you know, for their races, and who do you think that people raise this money from? I mean, this isn't even a democracy anymore, so I would, you know, it's just getting to meet your monthly money. So I would add that as number four.
Association Director of Minnesota Association of Remedial Services. I agree with the comments from the person from Wilder and about the interrelatedness of our issues. I think when you raise questions about top priorities, that... I think when you raise questions about top priorities, that whenever we talk about priority, prioritizing things, that separates our issues. And it gets us thinking in ways that are targeted on specific issues rather than how they relate to each other.
Yeah.
I cannot miss sight of that. I'm concerned about issues of change, and concerned about whether the new administration, whether you and your colleagues in the Senate and the House understand in your actions, will show that you understand in your actions, that change isn't about reforming and fine tuning what we have, of seriously changing and looking at serious alternatives. It's more about paradigm shifts in our thinking. Like the person that referred to the WPA, I mean, that's paradigm shift, to make some significant change. And I think we need to be doing that. I have a concern about whether the, sort of the lockstep political system can respond, whether people will be too concerned about protecting their goal from getting more, and looking to figure out whose goal they can go on, rather than properly taking care of issues.
First, just quickly, Ron, first of all, I think your concerns are on the Mar. Second of all, certainly in all my legislative work, trying to be a really good senator for Minnesota, going to be in that spirit of, if you will, the paradigm shift, trying to push it as far and as hard as I can. But third of all, I believe ultimately, the other thing that I think could happen in our country, is what I'm really hoping for, I wish I could do like that and make it happen overnight, is when people turn up to be back home on walls, is when we're going to really see the change. I just give a historical example, in nineteen sixty-four, Lenton Baines Johnson defeated Barry Gordon. And by nineteen sixty-five, and the civil rights movement was well underway, but do remember that post-sixty-four election, civil rights movement built up even more momentum, putting the pressure on Johnson and the Democrats to make the change. I think we need to see a real, we need to go up a number of levels of community activism, political activism in our country. A lot of the pressure's going to have to come externally, to the White House and the Congress. But the difference is that with President Bush, in my not so humble opinion, there were no possibilities. And with President Clinton, there are at least the possibilities. It's up for us to push, to speak out, to organize, to try and make it happen.
Issues I'd like to see Congress address are the issues of child support enforcement. There are a lot of federal mandates that are put on the states, including a big incentive of loss of welfare mandates if they don't do that. But they don't give the state and local governments sufficient resources to do it. For example, in Anoka County, they are so short-stamped, they cannot do any support actions except for establishing of paternity and welfare cases. Which leaves people who are marginally off welfare out of luck as far as getting any child support collection enforcement. I know your office has been doing a lot of brainstorm with family law community and support people who are interested in these supporting collections, and they've come up with some real good ideas, including a uniform judgments act for child support, which I think is real important. But if you, you also have to look at increasing the federal incentives as far as allowing counties and states to keep a larger share of the money that's collected as reimbursement for AMC money spent, so that there is more money to do the job, because it's really overwhelming. I also think you need to look at good pilot program that Anoka County's got, where they have people who owe child support, but they don't have very good ability to get jobs, and they're doing a job training program for them in connection with placement, so they are able to go out and get good jobs and pay child support. And I think that's an important thing to look at. In connection with domestic abuse, I know Sheryl's doing a lot of work in this area. But I think we need to have incentives at the federal level to make local and state police units do work in this area. In Minneapolis last year, we had nine thousand police calls and only three thousand arrests out of those calls. And this is in a state where we have mandatory arrests. Part of the problem is the police don't have training. They are rightfully afraid of going into those situations. But we don't give them the resources and the training to deal with the issue. It's a staggering amount of police calls, it's a staggering social problem, and we've got to deal with it. One of the problems connected with that is a safe place for kids to visit with parents who have been inculpating abuse on the field. And where those parents can learn different parenting skills, so their immediate reaction to frustration is not much.
I want to introduce my wife, Shirley, who's with me, who is working on a lot of these issues with me. And I'd like for you all to just follow up. Shirley, you don't, you don't like, I'm, anyway, she's right here.
You know, as a teacher here at North Star, I've been sick to my stomach since she made that comment about the property tax increase. And I don't know, the community realizes how much we appreciate the fact that I am a secondary teacher, and I made it through my first year because I only have twenty kids in my class. If that would have happened, I think I probably wouldn't be here at North Star this year, for sure. And the fact that when you do put the beat on, and you do make your voices heard, there are going to be results. And it's six years, you may see slow and subtle decreases in crime and the use of drugs and all the things, especially that economy comes along, the Lake and Wilder Foundation is so true about everything in your place. I deal with those problems as a teacher teaching second grade every single day, drugs, unemployment, and, and I'm trying to teach these kids to read.
Someone spoke about the WPA. Nothing's been said about the CCC camps.
They're a conservation forum.
Yes. And I suggest that we set up a little conservation forum, not only for young men, but for young women. We could use the army bases that have been pulled down, they're already there. We could use the barracks and everything else for such pull to rise.
We went full circle tonight, because we almost returned to Jerry's point at the beginning that a number of people said, and I accept it as really fair criticism. When I said, "Sort out your priorities," Jerry essentially said, "I'll do that." But the thing of it is, a lot of these issues are really interrelated. And it should be part of a whole approach to our cities and our neighborhoods. This was very valuable for me, because it was really a pretty clear focus in terms of what you all were saying. And the second thing is, you all kind of care a lot about the neighborhood, and you speak from experience. And some of you speak from a real sophisticated policy point of view, some of you just speak from the point of view of conspiracy of lies. It's very, very helpful to me, and I really thank you for it. So now my promise, right, I promise, my promises is follows. Not to change the world overnight, although I'll wear my grave, we can't change the world. But rather, I'll give you something I have, I take it very seriously. I will work very hard with a lot of people in our offices. I really thank you for the direction, but things won't change overnight, they're going to change. Because all of us are going to make sure that happens. I think it's going to be a lot of changes in this country in this next decade. I really believe that, and this needs this real thoughtful information. So let's take it with, thank you very much.